Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. Do notice having been posted. But the record shows that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. And such reporting may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call. Mrs. Gagliardi?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci? Here. Mrs. Field?
Here.
Mrs. Terra?
Here.
And our student representative, Kara Canus, could not be with us this evening. She's not feeling well. We're very fortunate to have Autumn Marie Gray filling in for her. In addition, I know that Mr. Machado hasn't been feeling well. He may join us, but I'm not sure. He's been feeling under the weather all week. And Mr. Larrabee is on the way. However, we do have a quorum. And also with us this evening is our superintendent of schools, Jeffrey Schoonover; a director of business and finance, Lindsay Albinaz; a director of curriculum, Elizabeth Haskell; a director of technology, Stephen Leveque; and our director of special education, Lisa Matition; and also our director of buildings and grounds, Carlos Campus; and the principal of Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, David Lanzinski. We also have some other -- expecting some other members of the faculty that will introduce one as the program, while the meeting progresses. I know how saddened everyone is by the terrible incident that occurred at a high school in Broward County, Florida, just yesterday. It's something that any one of us who are involved in education constantly have on our mind, and it has been all too frequent an occurrence. So I'd ask everyone to take a moment to observe silence, to remember those who perished in that terrible incident, and also the families of those who were lost, as well as those who were injured. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, March 8th, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the Berkeley Middle School Library. We have on our agenda this evening a budget, a report from our budget subcommittee, and a budget workshop for our committee. I'm expecting that we'll begin that at 7:15, after we handle a few preliminary matters, and hopefully the committee will agree that any items on the agenda that we haven't reached by 7:15 will defer until after the budget consideration. So we're pleased to have with us this evening Mary Ann McDonald, who is extremely knowledgeable about the history of Somerset. And February of 2018 is the 300th anniversary of the first schoolhouse that was constructed in Somerset, so I've invited Mary Ann to come and do a very brief presentation about that schoolhouse, how it came to be constructed, and what the first formal education in Somerset consisted of. Mary Ann?
Would you want me to go over here?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Pierce, Mr. Schoonover, members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee, assorted administrators, and Ms. Lanzinski, who was here a minute ago. Okay. My name is Mary Ann McDonald, and I am here tonight representing Friends of Somerset Historical Preservation. In a few days, on Monday, February 19th, we mark the 300th anniversary of public schools in Somerset. On that day, a group of landowners, they were property owners, voted to build a schoolhouse on the land where Pottersville School stands today. They stipulated in the record that the schoolhouse was to be built for children, male and female. The project would be financed by selling lumber from an 80-acre lot. It was called the Schoolhouse Lot. It was a thickly forested 80-acre expanse of land that swept from County Street down to the Taunton River, was bordered to the north by Center Street, and bordered to the south by Washington Avenue. There was a very good market for lumber at that time, and all of the revenue that was brought in from its sale was stipulated, again in the record, to be used for the school. Town records are very good at giving a description of what people spent money on, and these are some of the different details about the first schoolhouse. It would be 24 feet long and 18 feet wide, and it would be constructed of good chestnut boards. I'm quoting. We have quality here. It would have two good oak doors with iron hinges. It would be furnished. It would be furnished with a bench and a long table. The men voting that day, and they were all men, they did their best. They were committed to providing the best that they could for the students. At that particular time, the economy in Somerset was in a very bad place. There were a lot of things going on, and money was extremely tight. They did the best they could. They were committed to that. They were inclusive. Girls were not allowed to attend public schools at that time. It would be 70 years before a girl could get into a public school in Boston. They were also ahead of their time by establishing what very probably could be the first evening program in the United States. Members of the community voiced their concern because the older children often could not attend lessons during the daytime because they were needed at home, or they were needed on the farm, or whatever. So there was a real commitment there to education. Those attitudes towards commitment and inclusiveness and inviting opportunity became a part of Somerset's educational tradition. And we wish all of you success in continuing those traditions on and into the fourth century of the Somerset Public Schools.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate that, and it's very interesting that our meeting almost coincides with the exact anniversary date, so.
Well, thank you very much for having me. Thank you for expressing an interest in the history.
Thank you. The next item we have on the agenda is to consider approval of a second ski trip to Smuggler's Notch on March 2nd through 4th, 2018. Ms. Freitas?
Thank you. So yes, as I said, this will be our second trip. The first one, everyone seemed to have a great time. The decisions were awesome, and I'm hoping for the same coming up on March 2nd. So if you'd like, I can give you a little rationale on why we want to do this and why we think it's important. It's been a part of school ski trips, ski clubs, been a part of local schools for decades. Certainly beneficial to our students in a variety of ways. Brings kids with different backgrounds together. Kids that would normally be friends, maybe in their circles, kind of seem to meet and have different connections on these trips. It's educational. It engages the body kinetic learning style. It challenges students to think while moving. And also, it's really big for their confidence. If they can get down a trail and have success and mastery, they feel really good about themselves. You know, it's a great opportunity for kids to learn how the art, the sport of skiing, snowboarding. It can create new passions, new hobbies, and it could become a lifelong venture as a result. And I myself was the product of a ski trip. Probably would have never learned if I never went on a school trip, so I wish I could go all the time, if they know. And it's also a good way for teachers and students to kind of see each other in different lights, not in the classroom. So again, this trip's 100% funded by the students. No money from the school is used, and we'll ask for your approval.
How many students did you have on that first trip?
The last trip was 39 kids. This trip, the numbers are still, the deadline's tomorrow. There's a couple of kids who, it was kind of a quick turnaround with the trip. So the numbers right now are looking a little bit higher than that, but I even had the final count come in, so.
Higher than 39?
As it sits, as the people who signed up, not necessarily the people who brought the checks. So like I said, the deadline, so we'll find out for sure, but the deadline's tomorrow, and really I'm probably going to give it till the Monday coming back from vacation because it was such a short, quick turnaround, so.
And do you have any, actually, what is the cost?
It's $304. That concludes three days of skiing, so we leave Friday morning at 5:00 AM. Last time was great. The kids just slept, so we just went straight through. We got up there probably around 10 o'clock, 10:30, and gave the kids the passes, gave instructions on what they need to do and when they need to be back, and off they went. So three days of skiing and slopeside condos. If you're the lucky, lucky group, sometimes literally you're sliding the last door, putting your skis on right there, go down a hill, and get up, get on, left. You can't really beat the price for the amenities and things that we get, so.
And have you found that that's affordable? But I think our concern was, is there a way to identify families or individuals who would love to do that?
Yeah, I'm not too sure. You know, it hasn't, I mean, I'm sure there are kids who said, oh, they can't afford or they don't want to spend their money on that, or anything like that. So I mean, I'm sure there are kids who want that. I just, they haven't brought it to my attention, and I wouldn't really know what to do because it's all self-funded. You know, we've done business with this mountain for a long time, so if it was a real special circumstance, it might be possible, something like that.
I just think it's a great program, and I just hope that people who want to participate.
Yeah, I agree. And I, yeah, it would break my heart to somebody if they really couldn't go, if they really couldn't afford it, and it was like one of their dreams of high school, you know?
Right.
That would be crushing.
Let me just add one quick question. Please, so the students have a choice to either go on this first trip or the second trip that isn't a double?
Oh, they can go both.
So with a child that hasn't been on it yet, get way first chance?
There, we've taken 85 kids on before, so there's no, there's no, yeah, that was tough weekend. Not a lot of sleep, a lot of walking around, you know, and checking in on people, but yeah, so there's no, there's no number. Usually, it usually comes in one bus, but like I said, we've had a couple times where there were more than one bus.
Yeah, if there were a situation where there was a student that really wanted to go, but wasn't able to afford it, I think we'd like to know about that.
Okay.
See what we could do.
Okay. That'd be great.
The other thing, the question I always ask is, has the principal approved the number of chaperones?
Yes, right now, I mean, we're penciled in with, going by the last trip and the numbers that we saw, we try to keep a ratio of one chaperone to 11 students, which is one condo. So 11 kids stay in one condo, and a chaperone stays with them. So right now, we have four, one of the teacher and two parents, who have the courage to act.
Okay, so that's approved. Okay. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the ski trip on March 2nd through 4th.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any further discussion? Yes, further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is approval of the All-State Wrestling Tournament trip, February 23rd and 24th,
Good evening. My name is Troy Papas. I am the head coach of the wrestling program here at the high school. And I'm actually requesting an overnight stay for the one qualifying wrestler for both this upcoming divisional tournament, which is tomorrow afternoon into Saturday, and the All-State tournament, which we expect him to qualify for the week after.
Where will that be?
So the Division III tournament happening tomorrow is at Wakefield Memorial High School, which is just north of Boston. And then All-States the week after is at St. John's Prep in Danvers, which is also north of Boston. And the reason that I'm making this request is because if we were to be transported back on Friday night and then again in the morning to the tournament on Saturday, the maximum amount of time, this is if we got to bed, got home, went straight to bed, woke up, maximum six hours of sleep, I just don't think that's sufficient for a full day of wrestling.
So what are the, what will the accommodations be?
Just the most economic hotel we can find. Does that answer your question?
So you have one student and?
One student and then two coaches, so two hotel rooms.
And is that part of the, is that part of the athletic budget?
Yes, I believe so.
Is that part of the athletic budget?
I believe it is.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Who is the student who's qualified for these tournaments?
His name is Luke Farrier. He's a third-year senior. His brother, a four-year senior, was qualifying for the same tournament last year, sole qualifier.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the overnight trips to the regional tournament and the state tournament?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Terra. Any further discussion? Yes, discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is consideration of a student trip to the Galapagos Islands in February of Mr. Talbert and Ms. Kamara Arujio.
Okay, so inside your folders, you're going to find on the left-hand side the letter and prospectus to the trip, and on the right-hand side, you're going to find the PowerPoint that was shared with your school email addresses this afternoon, as well as the credit information off of the class. So just to introduce ourselves, I'm Matt Talbot. I'm the Envirothon team coach and science content coordinator. With me, I have Maggie from EF Tours, and then I'll turn it over to the two world language teachers.
Matt, you're introducing it.
Kelly and Mary Jo.
I'm a world language teacher and a world language advisor.
And I'm Erica, content coordinator for the world language department.
And again, Maggie Lenahan. I'm from EF Educational Tours headquartered in Boston.
So just to give you some background information with this, back in 2006, we did our last trip. Kelly and Erica did a trip to Europe, and since then, we haven't had any outside trips, outside the country, or anything to do with world language or other organizations. So what we want to do is to try to bring that kind of global warming back to Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. I had the opportunity of serving on a teacher trip back in 2015 to the Dominican Republic, where we did community service learning, and we were teacher participants as well as teacher evaluators to see how effective those programs were and if that was something that we would bring to our schools. So as a result, when I came back from that trip, I spoke to Ms. Pereira and then Ms. Kamara Arujio to talk about the potential of bringing that trip forward and doing something both with the science and world language departments. Do you want to give some background?
Yeah, sure. So you have some information about EF and the folders they passed out. We are accredited, just like your school is. We're actually accredited for every area of the United States and abroad. We have undergraduate universities, one starting in Boston across the world in the UK. But when it comes to educational tours, we really focus on safety and quality and obviously the educational value of our programs. So as Matt mentioned, you know, this does bring together a lot of science, a lot of Spanish students that can really explore a passion in the Galapagos Islands. We have been around for over 50 years, actually going on 54 years. So when it comes to safety, when it comes to our global presence, we've really seen it all, and we actually have offices and schools, more than 500 schools and offices actually in 54 countries now. We just have a new office in Panama, and we do have staff and an office in Quito, Ecuador.
Can you just share with them local schools that you've worked with as well?
Yeah, so we work with a lot of schools throughout Massachusetts and all of New England and the rest of the United States, but locally, New Bedford has a 15-year program with us. Dorphy, or the other ones we talked about earlier?
Diamond.
Diamond, New Bedford, Barrington, England, and Rhode Island. Bristol.
And Oliver Ames.
And Oliver Ames, yes. A very large program with Oliver Ames as well.
So reflecting credit, one of the things that Kelly and I spoke with, Ms. Lanzinski, about when we brought it, is the whole idea of students being able to get credit for learning outside the classroom. And one thing that EF offers our students is everyone that goes on the trip is set up with an online learning program called Leech Share. And what the kids can do is they can either go for high school credit for a class, either situated in world language or science, or they can get additional college credit, you know, if they want to put it forward, especially for upperclassmen, if they want to get some credits out of the way. And both those programs are offered through EF. Will facilitate here at the school, but the work will be presented and graded by EF and then turned over to us. If the kids are going for college credit, it's going to be a little additional, whereas the high school credit is included in their price, and the college credit is worked with...
Through Southern New Hampshire University. We have three professors that work exclusively with our EF travelers.
And in addition to that, when they, when the students come back and they finish their projects or their papers, the intent would be that they would present at the school's multicultural week presentations.
Which we always have in March. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the responsibility of the tour directors and the group leaders and the chaperones. Maggie's going to talk a little bit about the EF Tours later, but the EF tour director will be with us 24/7 from the time we land in Ecuador until the time he brings us back, or she brings us back, to the airport. We will have one chaperone for every six students. Matt and I will be the group leaders. We are requesting that David Gleason, who is another Spanish teacher, be in another chaperone because he is experienced in international travel and speaks Spanish, and Erica Pereira, who also ran a trip with me 10 years ago, so she's experienced with that as well. The way we usually structure it is we are all responsible for all of the kids, but we each are designated six kids. So whenever we have to separate in a museum or wherever, we're responsible for those six kids, and those six kids find us. Okay? And then we all check in as a group. So that's usually how we handle it. We will be with them 24/7, obviously not when they're sleeping, but we will be checking up on them constantly.
And EF sponsors chaperones based on six paying travelers, so we will pay for every chaperone for every six students that sign up for the trip.
I'm just going to talk about safety.
When you say, when you say you're going to pay, what does that mean?
EF pays, so it's not like students paying for the chaperones. It's EF sponsoring those teachers to go as chaperones and take on that responsibility for six students.
So one of the reasons why we went with EF Tours is some other tour companies, the chaperones fee is involved with the student pricing, but EF Tours doesn't do that.
And the tour director that she mentioned is local, so they're from Ecuador, have all of that knowledge to make it an even more quality, educational, and, you know, safe experience.
Are you a nonprofit entity?
We are not. Our MBA program...
You know, bottom line, my skepticism, but you have to cover the cost of the chaperones' travel expenses somehow. It has to be incorporated into the cost of the trip somewhere, doesn't it?
Yes, however, we have a lot of different programs, so educational tours is just one division with 54,000 staff worldwide, so some of those costs come from our more nonprofit things like our schools.
Before I continue, we talk about the safety rules, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Talbot and Ms. Kamara Arujio for putting this together because it was a lot of work. This obviously is a huge undertaking to take students abroad. It was a huge responsibility on our part last time. The reason we haven't done it isn't because we don't want to do it. We wanted to do it, it just was not something that prior administration was interested in. So, and we have continuously traveled on our own with our families in this last 10 years. So it's not like we've not been out of the country since then. We have, I know, maybe five times at least, and same thing with Ms. Kamara Arujio. The expectations, rules, and laws are made clear in the first meeting. I know a lot of times when trips come out, many people come to the first meeting when they realize it's not a vacation, that it is a trip and that every minute is accounted for, and you're not on the beach, or you're not, you are doing a lot of work. It is a very extensive trip in terms of physical ability that you need to have, and this one especially, because there's a lot of hiking, and that's going to be somewhat of a problem.
Constant traveling.
Exactly, constant traveling. Those, all of those things are made clear. For example, when we ran that last one, we had over 40 families show up. We ended up with 18 students in the end. When they actually read through the, like, all of the requirements, including dress code, when you're going in museums and churches and things like that, you have to understand that you have to be respectful of the culture, and all of those things come into play, so that's all made clear at the first meeting. Alcohol is prohibited for all participants, including chaperones. That was the rule that we had last time, and that works out to be the best. So we chose at meals for alcohol not even to be served at the table. You know, this is obviously something that is customary in many countries, but we just chose to have it out of sight, out of mind for students and everyone involved. Cell phone restrictions, this is, we did have students on our trip that had cell phones, one that had a major medical situation, so we had to make sure that we could use the phone and such. Now, obviously, more and more students have phones, but we have to make it clear that we are very focused on safety. So when you're supposed to be walking and traveling, we can't be looking at our cell phone and, you know, putting posts on Instagram and Twitter and things. There'll be a time and place for that, and we'll make that clear with parents, that we'll have a check-in time, you know, per day, but it won't be constantly all day long. And there are some locations that cell phone coverage is not as good as, you know, students might have it here, so that will be something that we'll have to explain. Room checks are done nightly. Usually...
Sometimes more than once.
Usually, we did it every two hours during the night. So again, like Mr. Freitas said, you're not sleeping. It is very tired.
We sleep when we come home.
Exactly. Exactly.
Don't tell the kids when you're doing this.
Exactly, it just, yeah. Rules and regulations of EF Tours, student parent handbook, of course, and the district policies will all be followed. All of those are explained to the students and parents prior. One of the things that we learned from the last trip, or trips I've taken, because I did chaperone with Mr. Freitas as well, is that parents would have to be stateside during the time that the students are away with us. In the event that there's an emergency, that we have to contact people, they have to be stateside and be able to be reached, not on a private vacation, because that has happened.
And if something major does happen, which we hope will not, the students come home at the parents' expense.
Exactly. And if we have to come home with one of them, they come home at our, we come home at their expense as well. Exactly.
And that's if, that's if, like, the students break a rule and they do purchase alcohol or get in trouble. If it's a medical or, you know, an emergency along those lines, that's something that EF in the past has covered the expenses. Or as we're going to get to, there's insurance that therefore the families would be refunded for any medical expenses.
Okay, so the day the trip begins, we will be going together. The kids will meet us here and we will be bussed together with just the students and the chaperones to Logan Airport. We will have check-ins, we'll get them here early enough so we can check to make sure they have their passports. We will be sent the tickets in advance, so we will already have those. The day we come back will be the same. We will also have a bus bringing us back here and the parents will meet us here. We will constantly be checking for their travel documents even when we're there on the trip, but of course, they need to stay on the plane. The EF Tour Director, as I said before, will meet us at our destination and will be with us twenty-four seven. They usually stay in the same hotel.
They always do, and even if they live in Quito, they stay in the hotel with their groups at all times. And we do nightly safety checks to make sure there are emergency exits, that the fireways aren't blocked. So they're doing safety protocol each night while checking in with the group leaders and the group.
Thank you very much. And the students will be responsible for their own passports. I'm sure most of the hotels have safes, their own personal items and their room keys. And we do constantly, we will be doing constant check-ins, so we will make sure they have them. We were on, the trip we were on ten years ago, someone from another group lost their passports and it was a disaster because the kid had the passport with them and we were in France and they couldn't find it, so we don't want that to happen. And we, we're not going to hold the passports because if we're holding twenty-four passports and God forbid something happens to us, then twenty-four people have to find the embassy and get the passports, so they're responsible. Before we left, last time, we did require everyone to have a copy at home. So a copy was left of all the information to expedite any of the process.
And we also have the emergency.
Right, exactly. So we had that in a separate location.
Does your trip register with the embassy, with the US Embassy, once you get there to let them know everybody that's on the trip?
They do that in the booking process. So our worldwide headquarters is in Luxor in Switzerland. They work with our regional office in Quito, Ecuador, to make sure everything is booked. The government is aware because we have thousands of students that go through Ecuador and the Galapagos every year.
So the next couple of slides are the day-by-day itinerary for the trip. And so before we go through this, we're not going to go through each one, but one of the reasons why we chose the Ecuador and Galapagos trip is because of the Spanish immersion to it, as well as the biology aspect to it. All biology students, environmental science students will look at the works of Darwin and his travels across the Galapagos. So even if they've already taken the class of biology or even in the lower levels, they've learned about Darwin and evolution, and this is really the acapecalico of where a lot of the scientific evidence comes from. So it's kind of, from a geeky science point of view, it's not just those huge tortoises that you see, but this is the land where, you know, that theory and the support for it came. So it's going to be kind of cool. And then on the second day, if you could just, one of the last days, for the Spanish immersion, the, which one, where they? Day eight, they'll actually be going into the local market using Spanish immersion.
I have to say as well, on the last trip, we, so that year we ran two trips. We did like a practice one with adults and then we went and did the student one. They were equally challenging, but we had students that did come on the trip that spoke Portuguese, French, and Spanish. It was open to all students. That's typical language that we have here at the high school. And, you know, we don't want people to think that it's just Spanish students or currently enrolled in Spanish going. We had students in all three languages.
Those few students who spoke French helped the Spanish students in French.
That's why it's immersive, so it worked out well. Oh, okay, yes. Okay, so what's included in the tour? Okay, so our airfare and transportation, all throughout Ecuador is there, including, we have a couple of flights that we have to take to the islands and a few ferries. So that's all included. And I believe the tour director takes care of all of the tickets. We have hotels, seven overnight stays in a hotel with private bathrooms. We do have to say that because a lot of times people think Latin America, they think hostels. But no, we have private bathrooms. The meals are regional style, but I did read that they do try to, they do understand our diet. So they do kind of cater a little bit. When we're on mainland Ecuador, we're going to have breakfast and dinner daily. On the Galapagos, we will have three meals a day. Okay, so lunch when we're in Quito, which is only a couple of days. We're kind of on our own, but I'm sure they'll direct us in the right direction.
Right, so days three through six, not the two days in the beginning and not the travel day back, every meal is included, yeah.
Including bottled water and safe water consumption.
And the only reason it's not on those other days in Quito is because the tour director will take the group somewhere where there will be multiple options. So rather than having them only have one option, you know, if they want to get McDonald's, they can, but if they want to try something a little more authentic, they can also choose to do that.
And that's where the dividing comes up with our six kids. The sightseeing tours and all of the entrances are covered. They're included, the tour director will have them. And you, did you, you want to talk about the twenty-four-hour emergency service?
Yeah, so for twenty-four-hour emergency, I've already referenced that we have staff on the ground in Quito that work for Educational Tours as well as our language schools. So there are people that can get to the group or help the group if anything does go wrong or if any, you know, chaperones get sick or anything like that. But we also have a twenty-four-seven emergency team that sits in our Boston and Denver office so that parents or when you're on tour, you know, anyone traveling can reach someone here in the United States from our, from our offices at any time, night or day. So if anything does go wrong, if a student is sick and needs medical attention, you know, or anything big or small, we do have people that will be working to help support the group no matter what.
And then the last slide is really to talk about the trip price and options for kids that might want to go or might not be able to afford it, maybe the first year. What we're really looking to do with this is, you know, make it something that becomes part of our culture again. You know, when I was a student here at the Old Somerset High School, you still had trips to France every year. You had trips to Italy within the eighties, seventies, and so on. We'd kind of like to bring that back. So one of the things that we look at is we submitted the price on the right-hand side of the packet. It shows the full price with everything that Kelly just spoke about. The only thing that not involved with that price is the busing from here to Boston and back. And the reason why we're asking that we take the bus from here and back is that, so all the kids are together when we board the plane and all of them are coming home with us, so we're keeping track of everyone just to make sure that, you know, all our ducks are around. Other things that, you know, as Erica and Kelly had experienced within their first trip, they had some students that weren't able to financially afford it and there was different avenues available for those students. One of the things that EF offers the kids is a donations page. So they're actually given a link where they can share on social media. If they go to Rotarians, if they go to Lions Clubs, there's a link that they can share with them if they're looking for pledges, if they're looking for donations. So there's different roads for funding if maybe they can't afford it through their, through their family. One of the things too is you have a two-hundred-dollar discount. When we have a parent meeting, there's some funds there that they'll save on as well as payment plans for the duration, the preparation for the trip. Do you want to speak more to the?
Yeah, to that page, that's everything. Yeah, so for the donation page, as Matt mentioned, that's if grandparents, moms, dads, anyone wants to donate to their child, other than, you know, a holiday present or birthday present, anything like that, it does deduct from their overall balance. If they have monthly payments set up, that comes right out of what they owe and will take a few dollars off each monthly payment. And even if they've paid in full in the beginning and are receiving donations, it would be a negative balance and we would then reimburse them. That amount will be reimbursed themselves. To speak briefly to the payment plans, people can pay in full. There's no extra benefit of doing that. But there's also monthly payment plans that allow them to do once-a-month payments or biweekly. Sometimes that helps if parents are receiving their paycheck in that way. As well as a manual payment plan, which a lot of our fundraising travelers use. This way, they pay only a fifty-dollar manual payment plan fee so that our traveler support team is working directly with them for those invoices, for those manual payments, and it's three manual payments in larger chunks compared to the monthly payment plan.
And then to lock in the price, even though the January meeting where we were supposed to present at first, we locked in the price that we were quoted back in December. We put a personal deposit down to make sure that we locked in the price prior, prior to it. Any questions, comments, concerns?
You can also speak to the peace of mind policy.
Okay.
Just a little bit more of safety. The administration asks questions about, you know, what happens if, right now, Ecuador is safe. The US State Department just changed the travel alerts and warnings to a scale of one through four for rating how safe the country is. We abide by all US State Department warnings. And now this scale, Ecuador is a one on the safety scale, which means it's one of the safest countries to go to. If for any reason, once people are signed up as you get closer to the trip, it escalates to a three or four, then we would work proactively with the group to change the destination, to change the trip, to provide refunds or future travel vouchers, to really work to make sure that these students are getting the opportunity to travel and have this experience. And then separate from that, our peace of mind policy is something that every school can take advantage of. And if for any reason, regardless of safety, if the group as a whole decides, eh, we don't really feel comfortable going here anymore, as long as it's up to forty-five days prior to the trip, so up until a month before, a month and a half before the trip, we will work with the group to also change the destination, to adjust the itinerary, or to provide future travel vouchers for the following year to all of those students. Do you have any questions on any of that?
So I just have a couple of questions. So first, I would be okay if it was definitely just geared toward seniors and it was a four-year plan for that. I have some concerns with any grades under senior level. You know, also, just to make sure the drinking ages can chew over there. And some information that I have there is kind of a high crime rate in that area. People are looking to police it. So I just have a little concern if it was, like I said, kids, junior, sophomore, freshman zone. Like, it is great to give this opportunity, but I would be okay if it was a four-year plan, especially for a place that had a plan and showed interest in it and had a chance to afford it.
The first time that we went, we opened it to everyone and we did have a variety of students. The only problem we run into, because we did it in the summer, those seniors have graduated. We had nothing to hold over them. If they had committed a crime or done anything that we could help them, we couldn't at that point. They were all nineteen, most of them. And we decided this time it would be during the school year, abiding by all the Somerset Park and regional rules, as well as obviously some crimes committed. We, you know, students and parents are aware that those types of things, laws have to be followed. The señora and señora can't help you when those things happen. But we did have younger students and they did a fantastic job, honestly. They were, they were, they just hung in there. Honestly, our older students had more of a difficult time. We had meltdowns. I'm glad I had a psychology master's degree.
We had a lot of meltdowns.
Lots of meltdowns the first couple of days. People, you know, they get very excited about leaving mom and dad or, you know, whoever's taking care of them, but when they're actually there in the middle of a crowd and they have to figure out how to say something that they already know how to say, but now they've forgotten how to say it, they, we had lots of tears the first couple of days.
And we know kids will be kids. But this type of a tour, they're constantly going to be doing something, nonstop, until it's time for them to sleep. And like I said, we pretty much don't sleep.
Right, there's no, there's no.
We're not going to a cafe in France and it's, honestly, we're going to be hiking and very active. It's a very active tour, so it's a little bit different than when you're.
Even if we had, the only time that Mrs. Mariano Jo mentioned that we broke up into the groups of six were if we were in a museum that was just like the Louvre. I mean, there's thousands of people. I could not keep eighteen kids together, so six of us, and I mean, they became very friendly with us because they would not stop. Like, they were like our own children, holding on to us everywhere we went. We had to break up to go on a metro, break, that's the only time.
And it got to the point even on the metros where they were pushing us all in together.
Right, they had, we were attached to the heavy team, right.
How do you prepare the children for, you know, you're talking about the experience. For a tour like this and if, as Mrs. Harris said, you're taking kids from different age groups, how do you prepare them for international travel if they haven't done it before? I mean, I think you touched upon it a little bit with the scale. It's very different than it was twenty years ago.
Right, yeah.
And a lot of the kids, in my experience, haven't had that experience traveling. How do you prepare them for that?
Even at the time, so in two thousand seven when we left, they had already made the changes in the airports, the whole liquids, all of that had been changed. We had monthly meetings prior to. So that whole year before, it was preparation. We went through an actual luggage, how to pack a bag, what you're going to be expected to do. We cannot be with you at customs or at every location, we are separated out. They had to answer questions at passport inspection. They had, we did all of that, like, role-playing with them because they are not used to that. And again, they sometimes get nervous when they're asking them questions to open their bags. We had students have, things were confiscated because they didn't follow the rule of packing the carry-on properly on the way home. And again, you know, we explained that you never argue with anyone that's a uniformed officer in those places because it's, you know, it's very serious and you don't want to get in trouble. But we did, we role-played all of that with them prior, everything. Even just the clothing, you had to bring in clothing, say, this is what the college shirt they're talking about, you have to bring. The girls with the skirts had to be past their knees, or no shorts. And we went in July, it was extremely hot. And then it was like just those little things that they really did not.
And we did have some employees who didn't listen to us when we said we need shoes to go into a certain show, and they didn't bring shoes. So we said, grab your euros, you're going to go buy shoes, because the laws are very different over there. And that's one of the reasons we really need chaperones who have experience with international travel. Because we can't be with them, but we can position ourselves, well, the first person goes through customs, moves down, goes to baggage claim, and then the whole.
What liability does the district have?
The district, whether you give sign-off or not, has zero liability. So we have a fifty-million liability coverage plan per incident and lawyers and a legal team in-house. So regardless of it being school board approved, the teachers, the school, and the district have no liability. That's in this as well too, if you want to see the details there, page five.
What I wanted to ask is what is your expectation for tonight?
Well, we originally asked to be put on the agenda back in January for approval of the trip. We would like to go forward with the trip for two thousand nineteen.
Well, let me say, I often spend a couple of hours getting ready for these meetings and I spent that time and I had none of this information. I've had no opportunity to read it. And I, I am not, at least I personally, am not in any position to make a decision on something like this tonight. So what is, what is the real timeframe here? When do you need?
Well, looking at the wording on the agenda, we figured that you were going to be digesting it and thinking it over because the first couple were approval and us were, we were consideration. So based on that, we figured you weren't going to give us a definite, but we would like or prefer an answer for the next meeting if that's possible. Simply because the.
If you can look at it, I, I will be honest with you. I have very grave reservations about this. We are a public high school. I've said this many times during the time I've served on the school committee, that providing opportunities for public school kids that can exclude students based upon their family's ability to pay is something that I have real trouble with. This is a thirty-six-hundred-dollar. This is a thirty-six hundred dollar, one-week trip. And it would, it would take a lot of convincing to me to feel that this is something that we as a public high school should sponsor. I cannot help but think that it would be the haves on this trip and the have-nots would be excluded. If I can be convinced that, you know, districts like Fall River, New Bedford, which obviously are gateway cities, can assure that that's not happening. But that, that's one bit of information that I would really want to see. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the safety of the students. I glanced very briefly at some of the things that are said about Ecuador and they're sort of mixed. So I just, I think we can, I had reached out to the superintendent, but he's extremely busy right now. I had hoped to talk to him in advance for this meeting to get a sense of what the expectations were. We weren't able to have that conversation. So what, what really is the deadline that, where you would have to say that, you know, you need to present this to students and, you know, get, at least get the initial kind of commitment? Is it something that has to be done by March first, or is it April first? What is, what is the real timeframe?
The extended deadline from the January reschedule from you guys puts us to March fourth.
We have, yeah, we have a snowstorm.
I understand.
I mean, in January, so we're, we're kind of, we're kind of backed up here. Our next meeting is March eighth. But what is, what is the kind of the timeframe for this?
There's, there's technically no timeframe for students and parents to be able to opt in and sign up for this. However, the pricing, because it was extended from January, is only valid until the end of March. So if at that point, the early enrollment scholarship will no longer be offered, which I know will be very helpful to some families. I also know we've briefly talked about creating kind of a four-year program. That's what New Bedford, that's what a lot of other towns and high schools that we work with throughout all of New England have done, so that, you know, seventh and eighth graders know about trips that are gonna be happening their senior year and they can start saving, you know, six years in advance. So that's one thing to consider too, with the extended timeline of what they're hoping to kind of produce at the school. But if it is to move forward as a school board-approved trip, rather than something that's separate from school, which is also a possibility because we cover liability, I would say hopefully March, so that parents and families can take advantage of the early enrollment on trips.
Well, we have a policy in place that any overnight trips require a school committee approval, so I don't know if you're thinking of some device that would avoid that, but look at that in a very positive way.
Well, we had gone last.
Maybe some other community organization could sponsor it, I suppose.
No, I mean, we wouldn't, I'm not in the business of doing anything shady. And I went the last time in the summertime, which could have been easily a trip that any of the kids could have met up with. I have a home in Europe, I could have said, that we didn't do any of that. We did everything because we wanted the approval of everyone involved. To the first point that you mentioned about students affording and not being able to afford, we had done some fundraising prior. There are, I, we are very close to those eighteen students that went, so I'm not going to state names or make mention of any particular person now because this is filmed and someone could see, and I don't wanna make anyone feel uncomfortable. But we had students in very dire situations that the entire trip was paid for. So.
I was gonna add.
There are ways around that, but I don't wanna, again, not gonna say.
No, we wouldn't want you to.
I, I think, I'll just follow my two cents. I think the exposure to having this opportunity, I think, was wonderful for students. And in schools like Fall River and Westport, I mean, Fall River and New Bedford and New York, I think that we should really consider. And I think we've already cut back on one foreign language last year, unfortunately. I happen to think that it's really important in this global economy that we prepare our students to be able to interact with people from different cultures. And I know we've talked about bringing people from other cultures here, but to actually put our students in those other circumstances, to experience other cultures, I think is really a worthwhile, a tremendous learning experience. So if we can figure out to make sure that safety is accounted for, that students can participate regardless of the ability to pay, I think that this is a worthwhile endeavor for us to try and do. And I do agree that if we could do it in a long, so it's something that becomes part of our culture, I, or just speaking for myself, I think it's of value.
I mean, again, if the conversation starts today and then if there, even if people feel on the committee that there are other trips within EF tours that would be better suited, if you're concerned, I would just say that we wanna be sure that we're very careful about information we read and that we understand, because we have foreign students that come here. And I would be very afraid to send my student to America if I were watching the news recently. So it's vice versa with us sending students in other places of the world. We have to make sure that we have, you know, we don't wanna be close-minded, but we also wanna be very safe. Obviously, I have a family, I don't wanna leave my children and feel that I'm going into some area that was very dangerous. And I'm watching someone else's children, obviously, that I want them to feel safe. So I, if we can at least start the conversation, if there are other programs that EF tours offers that you think that's better, but I think we should definitely try to look at all that again and.
To your, to your point, I know very little about Ecuador. So certainly any information that can be provided by the tour director or by the three of you that would familiarize and may be a little bit more with Ecuador and the current situation there, you know, certainly the internet is great, but, you know, you can't believe everything you read there. So certainly I'd be relying on the information that you can view just to assuage any fears that Ecuador is not.
We have upcoming, you know, vacations planned, parents, students going on trips. Most of, a lot of my students tell me they're going to Mexico. It's a number four right now by the US State Department. Many people traveling with families don't realize some of the places that they're traveling to have those warnings already in place. So again, we just wanna make sure that we have like the most accurate information when we're making these decisions, because it is extremely important. Safety is our first goal, so.
Let's basically ask a little question. Are children with special needs or autism, or if they have a disability, are they included? And how do you accommodate that? What's your expectation for that?
On the last trip, again, we had a student, probably.
Can't say the name.
Not gonna say names, but I've been here for eighteen years. This student probably had the most medical situ, most extreme medical situation I've ever had as a teacher-student relationship. She was in my class as well and went on the trip, and we made all the combinations necessary.
But like intellectual disabilities, how would you accommodate that?
We didn't have anyone, no one came to, you know, to us and asked, so I can't, yeah, we didn't have any interest.
Right.
At that time.
I just.
Yeah.
Well, I think those kids. It might be, if there is somebody interested, it might be something that we could explore. Somebody in the population that, that would be interested. That's something that could be explored, to be explored. It wouldn't be the first time ever that it happened. There must be best practices. There must be protocol, so it'd be followed by other school districts.
Yeah, we work with some schools that are all special needs, and so they have trips where it's all of their students and chaperones that are, you know, on the spec, on the autism spectrum or what have you. And so we can really cater to any student that wants to have this opportunity.
First, if we get a program here that would include them, it's through middle school and high school, so they can just be practiced, not just a trip. So what do we have for those kids to include them in this program and a four-year plan, if that's what you want?
All right, we will put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all so much for having me.
If there's information, if there's information that any committee member would like to have in advance.
Does anyone need another one of the proposals? Everyone has one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Autumn, do you have a report?
I have something written up. Tara sent this to me once, thanks, so I just, we'll get Sunday. So as many of you know, we have just started implementing mid-years this year in high schools. So since it's new, there's a lot of feedback from both the students and the teachers. A lot of the students have expressed concerns about just the back of the year's tests in the middle of the year. And then there has been a little bit of confusion from teachers of when to give the test because of electives and when they fall within the mid-year schedule that we receive. So that's something that in the future, just as it starts going more, like for next year and years going on, just to look into how it is approached with the days that it's given and just the uniformity.
I was just gonna add to that, because that, that has been brought up in my question, and mine too. And so a suggestion that came up was, and I don't know if this is even possible, to treat mid-years exams much like you do final exams, where there's a schedule of those, where they have a few days' time to study and.
Spread out that.
Yes.
We also have the dodgeball tournament coming up, and this is just a concern that was expressed from students about the T-shirts and only being able to have the last names on the back of the shirt. And I understand that there is like a reasoning to it that sometimes names can be inappropriate, but the students have just expressed that they wish that they had been able to have like their different names on the back. And the more like positive side, I guess. So we do have this speed trip coming up, which Mr. Brady has talked about, and I know that from the past trip that this happened this year, there has been a lot of positive feedback. So we're happy that we get to go on that again. The math team had a meet yesterday, and they have qualified for the playoffs, which happened to be on Pi Day this year, so that's kind of cool. And that will be at Fairhaven High School in March. And March is also Music in Our Schools Month, so there's many competitions and performances coming up within the schools and around all of Massachusetts. Deccos States is also coming up in March. Many of our students have qualified to compete there, where they will be competing for the international competition later on in the year. And with sports, this past week, actually a couple of weeks, there have been all the senior nights for all the different sports teams, and there have been lots of wins through those. Tomorrow is actually the basketball teams' senior night, so the boys will be here at this school. Last Saturday was the track, South Coast Conference competition at the Grading Bedford Oak High School. And there are a lot of students that did get to qualify and compete in that, and many that actually got awards and medals that day. And along with that, yesterday was the states competition up in Boston, where I think around like ten of our track students were able to compete. And Catherine Sullivan actually just broke the school record for the fifty-five hurdles, like. And that's actually really cool. So congratulations, Catherine. The boys' basketball team was also recognized for their community service, and they actually do their community service at the food pantry down in Somerset. So they receive the MIA Educational Athletics Achievement Award for their community service. We also have the spring sports starting up March nineteenth. So there's the girls' softball, boys' baseball, track and field, unified track, and the girls' boys', girls' and boys' tennis teams. So that's coming up.
Thank you.
Can I ask, what happens at the senior nights? Do they?
So at the senior nights, they honor the seniors with posters, and some students write speeches for the seniors. Lots of tears happen.
So does that usually happen right after a game?
Yeah, it starts in the beginning and like.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Schoenova, can we defer your report and move into the budget?
Sure.
So if there's no objection, I'd like to move to the report of the Budget Subcommittee and the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget workshop. Is Gabriele?
The budget subcommittee has met a couple of times with members of the administration. Gone through a couple of iterations, and the last one that you have in front of you. We thought that, after looking at what we did last year, that it would be important to bring in the rest of the committee sooner rather than later in the process. So today we are hoping that with all our directors of the different programs here, we can kind of get a bird's eye view of what went into this budget proposal and allow everyone the opportunity to ask some questions. But I think our goal in this was to, again, maintain focus on what was needed in the school. Specifically, we looked at what came out of Future Search and what's in our strategic plan, and we looked at shifting resources where possible, keeping in mind the two, where our two communities now sit in regards to finances. And so I think what you have before you is a very sound budget, and I welcome you to ask some questions. We actually have some other things we'd like to put in and change in there, but we wanted at this point to bring it to the full community. So at that point, if it's okay, I'll, if anybody else on the committee wants to add anything, I'll turn it over to the administrative team to kind of go through what we have in front of us.
Okay, Jessica. Okay, so we, like Julie said, we have met four or five times so far, starting in November. So it's, it's been a process as it usually is. We had, I had individual meetings with all of our directors, as well as with the superintendent. We try to meet every other week, talk about budget. Budget's always one of those things that we talk about, initiatives, what do we wanna do differently for next year? What's the strategic plan say? How are we in line with that? So we do have a very good, I would say, open communication between the five of us, as well as Mr. Campos too, at the beginning phases. Now we're at the point where we have to have conversations with the principal and content coordinators. So we had talked about what we want to do for the strategic plan and kind of keep things going the way that we had planned it, and we had that pretty much ironed out in January. So when we met with Mr. Lenzisky, I gave him a directive of, you know, coordinating with your content coordinators, you know, this is the number we wanna try to get to, you know who's on a renewal cycle for curriculum materials. If they're not on that renewal cycle, they will not be given a high priority. So he took that directive very well, thank you, Mr. Lenzisky, and he came up with numbers last Wednesday on February seventh. So Jeff and the principal and I met earlier this week. We went through those numbers. I think his proposal is in line with what we were expecting as far as numbers are concerned. The content areas that are in line for renewal materials are in there. So that is basically what the process has been so far. The numbers, I can, and I can ask, answer questions about the process if anybody has any, but four of you are on that subcommittee, so it's kind of involved in part of the process. It's really just from Mrs. Tera and Mr. Giliducci. So as far as the numbers are concerned, we are currently at a three-point-four-nine percent increase in our operating budget over last year. We went back and forth Tuesday night as far as where we want to get to, what things were we missing, other considerations that are still kind of in limbo. I would say at this point, there's been no final decisions. If you wanna look at the agenda items that we had given you, and I don't know why it gets stapled this way, I apologize if it was my fault, but it's really like, you look at the page numbers for the four grid pages, these are a synopsis of what each budget area. I sorted them by a function code, which I think is very helpful. I prepare the end-of-year report very similar to this, but in a more detailed fashion. Just some areas of highlights, if you wanna look at page four, it really does break down the revenue sources for the year that we're expecting for next year. It really does break down the revenue sources for the year that we're expecting for next year, comparing them to this year's expected revenue sources, as well as breaking them down for operating expenditures. The operating expenditures are projected to be a $381,266 increase over this current school year. The two areas of conversation, I would say, are related to technology and special education. You see that, you know, textbooks, office supplies, transportation, athletics, maintenance utilities, they all have small increases or decreases. Employee benefits is going up. We are anticipated to see an increase in our health insurance premiums for next year. And that percentage is not 100% known at this point, as well as the school choice and charter school tuitioning costs staying pretty level. So, I have given you as well the assessment sheet that we like to call, call it, so it's the one with the yellow box on the top left. It shows the 2018 assessment, which we had 979 students in total for this school year. It's really school year 2016, and it's a year behind. So, for this school year, we have 985 students, a split of 724 for Somerset, 261 for Berkeley. Obviously, we use the October 1st enrollment counts for the subsequent year. So, we technically, as of October 1st of 2017, we reported 985 students. That excludes the school choice students. Obviously, that number fluctuates from then until now, but this is what we go with when we start to prepare our budget. So, this is just the assessment. I'm not going to go through it in detail. We are expected to receive a little bit of a bump in Chapter 78, about 200,000 or so of an increase. Our charter school reimbursements, interest income, Medicaid and E-rate are staying pretty level, as well as our TV production revenue from the town of Somerset only. And that's why you only see the 80,400 in Somerset's column. You also have the operating assessment. Somerset, at this point, with this percentage increase, is recognizing a 3.6% increase in their assessment. Berkeley is seeing a .6 percentage increase in their assessment. The majority of the reason for that is that Berkeley has 16 less students enrolled this school year versus last year. And Somerset has 22 extra students. So, that does play a role when we talk about how the revenue is shared. And I won't go into the details as far as the minimum local and the foundation budget, but, you know. The capital assessment is staying pretty level. 6.5% increase for Somerset, it's going down 2.7 for Berkeley. That is also shared on a per enrollment basis, on an annual basis. So, overall, the total assessment, including operating capital, we are recognizing a 4.10% increase for Somerset, 350,191, and a reduction of half a percentage point for Berkeley, a reduction of $1,405 at this point in time.
I know you said you didn't want to go into minimum local contribution, which I would go into, but part of this shift in the assessments also has something to do with that Berkeley has finally reached its target share. So, from the time that we created the district to now, the formula was such that it worked with the state to edge Berkeley up towards its target share, and now it's there. And conversely, it was bringing us down, because we were always paying above our target share. So, based on the presentation I'm doing, so we're pretty much at those targets of communities. So, now, the reflection really happens more because of enrollment.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure how far in detail you wanted me to get into that, so just. So, because of the larger increases that you're seeing in special education and technology, I invited Mrs. Martician and Mr. Levak here tonight to go through some of those numbers. I just gave you the special education tuitions spreadsheet, just so you can kind of see that the tuitions are going to be about 1.5 million for next year. We do have three ninth graders, well, current eighth graders coming in from Somerset and Berkeley that will be out of district for us in the freshman year. Those are additional ones. We do have a few that were coming out, but they were at less of a tuition cost than what the current eighth graders will be coming in at. So, there is a fluctuation in our, in our special education tuitions. About 230,000 compared to this year. We also have the technology lines I have attached for you. It's a lot of information, it's very detailed. Some of it, I don't fully understand, I'll be completely honest, that's why I have Steve here. So, he's basically outlined every single thing that is coming out of his tech lines. Administrative tech software, those are the things district-wide that we use to run the school. We have our phone and Internet, our copiers, our high school tech software, which is basically protection against servers and Microsoft Office that everyone utilizes. And also, it's pretty much the first page, the second page of this is instructional tech hardware. This is when we start to talk about the one-to-one initiative, the devices that we're leasing for the students, student insurance. Then we have instructional tech software, which is a big chunk. These are all the softwares that the teachers are using in their classroom that we have felt are necessary to continue the projection that we're on at the high school. And the last line is just some small maintenance lines for him in case, in case, in case he needs something that's not in any of the lines above. So, I'll open it up for questions, if you have anything specific for these two individuals. I'm happy to answer them as best as I can, but it's kind of their area of expertise, so.
I'll just ask for one point of clarification regarding the technology. So, Mr. Levak, we have an increase this year. Do you anticipate future years will have similar increases? Or are there some things that are coming up now that are hitting our budget that we might not see next year? Just so we can plan.
With the exception of the Hive Manager, which is the Wi-Fi management, that's a 22,000 for three-year license. It is $11,000 a year for license, but if we purchase three years, we get it for 22,000. So, we basically get a year free. So, other than that, everything else is going to be an annual charge. The one I want to take, pull your attention to, is the Citrix. When we put the system in four or five years ago, we bought enough licenses to support everybody. Now, with the one-to-one initiative, it's tough to tell if all those licenses are going to be utilized. So, even though we're looking to renew all the licenses we have over the next six months, we're hoping to see what kind of usage we get. It's very difficult with the one-to-one, started two months ago. It's not being fully, fully utilized is not the right term, but it's not, it's not 100% the go-to, the day-to-day, you know, use the paper and pen like everybody's used to. It's not the norm at this point. So, I'm not 100% sure about how much of the Citrix is going to be accessed in the next six to eight months. So, I'd rather budget to renew everything we have. And if we evaluate over the next six to eight months, we may be able to cut that back. But again, it's too soon to tell with the amount of usage that's been going on. We need consistency, you know, and it's a new, it's new. So, we, I don't know. It's absurd. We may be able to cut that in half.
So, which is the line item that deals with broadband, our contract?
Our Internet?
Yes.
Comcast, under phones and Internet?
Upgrade to 300 MB.
Okay.
And Internet, okay.
This year, this year, we're paying for 300 meg, which was an increase from last year because we did add the one-to-one. Because we are getting involved with E-rate, it's been advised that we put forward what we feel we may be using. It's not necessarily saying that we're going to be using, but we feel what we may be using. So, the way, the trend I've been seeing, if we start getting all the students using the Internet on a more regular basis, we may need to boost this up another 100 or 200 meg in order to support what they want to do. So, looking on the high side, I was going with a 200 meg boost, which would then get us registered with E-rate at that rate, which would get us a better price if we did go through the 500 meg. We may only have to go to the 400 meg, which would then make this cheaper. But I wanted to make sure we had the headroom in case we did get hit hard, because I did not want to impact the students not being able to get to what they needed to do.
And just, oh, no, go ahead. I was going to say, just for clarification, E-rate is a, can you just explain what that is?
Right, well, basically what it is, is a program where we get a, sort of like a kickback. What is it, 40? Do you remember what it is?
It's about 50%.
It's about 50%, which goes back right to the town. Okay, so, if our...
Well, it goes back to us.
Does it?
The regional school.
Okay, okay, so it comes back to us. So, if we're looking at a $36,000 investment, we get 50% of that back.
Okay, I was just going to ask how it's, how it reflected in the budget. So, the budget has the full amount?
Full amount.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the E-rate, we would absorb it back into our budget when we get the E-rate back?
Yes, I actually just had to file it for the increased bandwidth today, so I've been done.
So, if we had gone with the lower band bandwidth, we may have not gotten the same kind of percentage back.
Got it.
Okay, so, the reason I raise the question is because my recollection is that, and this was before your times here, Steve, when we were, the technology subcommittee of the building committee was dealing with the technology issues, we actually had people from Comcast go in, come in and make a presentation. And we had, we have a commercial package, I believe, from Comcast. And I just wanted to be sure that in looking at this number, we've gone to Comcast and looked to see what commercial packages they have available to be sure that we get, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't get what you think we need, but I just want to make sure that we've made, you know, made the best deal with Comcast, that they, that they may have a package available that can increase, you know, the number of megs we have.
Yep.
But, you know, at a discounted rate because of the volume.
Right, and the people that I'm dealing with now are the same people that put in the service here at the school. So, they're aware of our situation. We, we do receive breaks. We did receive a good break on, when we did K-8, because we put a fiber line in the middle school. And because it was a brand-new installation, they didn't charge us for installation, they gave us a cut break for two years on the price of the line and for the Internet access. And it's just, it is what it is, unfortunately. It just, it's, that's just what it is. You know, I've gone back and forth with them several times, and this is, this is, this is their price.
I guess, I guess since they have monopoly.
Well, and that's, that's the thing, right? It's, it's, they get, they get the spigot. The more we want, they open it up, the more they charge us for the water, so that's what it is.
So, if we look at the technology, the post-technology budget overall, some of the key pieces are to maintain the one-to-one into the next year, right?
Yep.
So, we're going to be looking at...
Another 280 Chromebooks, as such.
To replace those that are going to be coming offline.
Right.
Right.
Yep, so we'll have four grades of relatively all-new equipment.
So, that's included in this budget?
Yes.
We're also looking at extending warranties that are...
Right. So, just for, just for, just for an instance, this year, or this past year, we actually paid for our security contract. We had to renew that for almost $13,000, at the cost of almost $1,000 a camera. All the cameras, all the servers, the software upgrades, 24/7 help desk, all that stuff is covered under that $12,000 a year, $13,000 a year. If the camera breaks, they come out, they put a new one in, the labor, everything is covered. And I just felt with the close to 200 cameras that we have, we have here, the servers, the software, the importance of the security system, it was something that was a necessity.
So, those are the basic, I just want to make sure we capture, or everyone knows the basic components of the changes in this year's technology.
So, what we did when we put the school in, when we purchased all these services, we also built in a three-to-five-year service plan with all these things. So, it's, now it's time to pay the piper. We're at the end of the four or five years, now is we get to pick it up.
And one of the things that we talked about in our, in our Budget Subcommittee meetings is beginning to, and I think, Steve, you're starting to do that, is looking at technology as a utility. It's something that, we don't want it to fluctuate too much up and down, but it's just a regular payment that we're going to have to make in order to maintain what we consider school. So, I think that's what we're getting to.
I agree, and I also think when Mr. Lanzinski is talking to the content coordinators, especially as we're starting to have these one-to-ones, we'll start to see hopefully shifts in other line items, such as textbooks, where we've seen that happen as more things come online. So that, as Julie said, it not only is a utility, but it's also helping take the place of some of these other costs that we've had now that we're moving things. And then hopefully, the next area where we'll start to see even more savings is in the copying section as well.
And I just, I also want to just bring to the table that even though we're putting, we have all this technology and we have to support it, I just want to point out that we only have 1.2 full-time technicians that work in this district. That's all we have for a school of 1,000 kids, close to 1,500, 1,600 devices, and 150 admins and teachers. If we didn't have this type of technology, we probably have three to four people supporting this environment. So, I just wanted to make, show where the trade-offs are. It's either in manpower, salaries, and, and benefits, or lesser fees of paying this.
Can I ask a question along those lines? Have, have we done anything about establishing a student help desk?
No, we have not, and I'll explain why. There are no repairs going on in the school because of the insurance, everything, anything that does get damaged, broken, you know, accidentally dropped, whatever happens to the devices, they get put in a box and they get shipped out to the insurance company. They fix it and they send it back to us. So, there is no repair work done onsite here.
One of the reasons I've raised it is because we had talked about batteries in the Chromebooks for seniors, and you had talked about the amount of manpower that might be required to change a battery. And it just occurred to me that it seemed like there was a possibility that maybe some of our more technically savvy students could at least, in terms of, I know there's an issue with the cost of the battery, but in terms of changing a battery in a Chromebook, whether some of our students would be capable of doing that if it was something that needed to be addressed.
I'd like to address the battery issue, if I may. There is no battery issue, okay? When students are charging their cellphones off the Chromebook, it's going to kill the battery. And if they don't charge up their Chromebooks at home, it's going to kill the battery when they come to school. We're not seeing issues with the batteries. We are hearing that kids are bleeding off their Chromebooks to charge their cellphones. That's going to kill the battery. And as far as changing the batteries for the next four months of a device that's going to be retired in May, it, it does not make any sense at all, to be honest with you. Those things are being retired, and then that's the end of it. They'll be there for spares, but it's not really worth the investment.
Okay. Any, any other questions on technology?
Well, when Karen was here and she spoke about the batteries not being charged, so that was inaccurate, had to be checked all of them, because she said it was just hers.
You can't check all of them, but I have not had any student come into my room to tell me that there was a problem with the battery, not one. I have tons of students come in because they have an issue with logging on, or the screen got cracked, or something like that. I have a revolving door of students, but I have yet to have one student come in and tell me there's a problem with the battery.
Well, you can keep us posted if there happens to be all of a sudden a rush, but you haven't seen it yet.
No, nothing.
So, if people are having trouble with batteries, they should go see them.
That's right. That's okay.
You don't, no, I think that that's...
I mean, it's, it's a simple thing to do. We... I mean, it's, it's a simple thing to do. We plug it in and there's, there's a diagnostics you run on the battery and most of the batteries come back with eighty, eighty-five percent battery life left in them. I mean, you stop replacing them when they're down to twenty and thirty percent.
Great. So that, that addresses the technology. I, I wanted, uh, Lisa, if you could give me just an, give us an overview of kind of the approach. Is it some of the programs that we've had in the, in the past year that have been successful? I know about two years ago, we opened another classroom here, so can you just give a little?
So the classrooms that we have opened over the last few years have been very successful and we are able to, um, keep a lot of our own students within the district and attending their community school. And our transition program is growing and because it's growing, um, in the future, meaning not the next school year, but the year after, we will require more transition support in that, um, which means more people to go out with our kids in the community with our life skills classrooms because they have jobs or whether they're, you know, out in the community going shopping at the grocery store or going out to lunch or, um, but the programs here have been for our kids successful.
Are they at capacity?
Very close to capacity. And the other thing is the needs of some of our kids are, they have great needs. So we, you do, you can't see a classroom with six students in there and think that you could have more students with similar needs, but when you look at the students' needs and what actually, um, services that they receive, that is a big, that's a, that's a big classroom to that, so. I know that there, um, before my time, when you were building the school and starting these programs, that you were talking about possibly tuitioning students in to, um, the programs. We can definitely explore that and see if we could, you know, get one or two. Um, but there's a couple of things, one, we would do, I'd have to do a new tuition agreement and as well, that I would need to explore and figuring out what the tuition would be that we would charge other districts. And two, it's not a guarantee that we would get students, um, because districts similar to our size or even smaller do send, you know, their students, they're part of a collaborative and they pay money to be a part of a collaborative, so they may send their students to the collaborative that they belong to. But we can definitely look into possibly, um, having one or two tuitioned students. And what I could do is I have, um, a list of, of the special ed directors that I could, you know, let people know that if we go down.
And what about in tech, in, uh, transportation, uh, I know we upped our fleet in the past year.
Which, that actually has helped a great deal with our transition program is having our own vehicles because we do have kids that go to different places or have different schedules and that has been very helpful in the success.
We were, we were using only one van a year and a half ago. We're up to two and a half throughout, throughout the school day, um, which allows flexibility for these students, which is nice. There's no new vans in this budget for next year.
There's no new vans.
We do all of our high school transportation with our vans. We do some out-of-district transportation. There's no new leases in here for new vans.
Did you say that two and a half vans used during the day?
For life skills or, well, not every day, but two usually every day and then sometimes a couple of days a week, there's another one used, yes.
Okay, so you mean on average? I was wondering how you use half the van?
Just the driver's side.
Just the passenger's drive.
So you, so you're saying you use maybe the third van two days a week, so it averages out to two and a half?
A week, I should, yeah, it's not a per day.
So, uh, Mrs. Martizian, as, I think I signaled that I was looking for some very specific information about our capacity in our, um, three classrooms that we have. And as I understand it, there are regulations and if we have a teacher and a paraprofessional in a classroom, we can have, I believe, up to eights, is it?
If it's a teacher and a paraprofessional, we can have up to twelve students in the classroom?
So that gives us the capacity to, to have thirty-six students in those three classrooms, correct?
If it were that easy, I would say yes, but, um, so two of the three classrooms, we do have, so for this year, for this coming school year, we will have ten kids in one class, we will have eleven kids in the other classroom, okay? Then in our third classroom, which is our classroom with students with more severe disabilities, we have six students in that classroom. The needs in that classroom of those students, putting six more students in there with similar needs is not in the best interest of the students or the staff working there. Because the needs are such that they're very involved. And right now it's, they're doing a wonderful job in there. But for the other two classrooms that we do have, those would be the classrooms that I would look for, um,
Tuition.
Tuition to any students.
All right, um, well, one of the classrooms has six students and we didn't, don't necessarily have to go to twelve. But the reason I sort of harp on this issue is because I very clearly recall when we were asked to, uh, open the third classroom, we were told that the cost might very well be offset by tuition, uh, from, for a limited number of students. And so each year I ask about this and we need, we need to consider, you know, the potential for revenue, uh, without doing a disservice to our students. But if there's a possibility of, for example, adding a paraprofessional to that classroom and still having a positive, um, revenue flow by having two additional students. I assume if these are high-need students, then the potential tuition is higher. And so I feel in the budget situation that we're in at the present time, we need to look at those issues and be sure, uh, that we have, have, you know, maximized whatever revenue we might, uh, we might be able to, uh, generate uh, since, since we have this capacity and.
So when you talk about the offsetting of tuition, so the six students in the classroom that we're speaking of, if we did not have that classroom, these students would be out of district. They would not be part of their community school, they would not be part of life of the school and easily, on average, I would say, the tuition would be sixty-five thousand, with not including transportation, would be at least sixty-five thousand dollars per student of those six students. So if we, and if we did charge a higher tuition rate, then we would be close to, we wouldn't be an attractive program for another district to come to because they could always go in their collaborative, which would meet their needs as well. So we have to balance that. So if we were to put more students, even, you know, two or three more students in that classroom, the size of the classroom, the classroom would be, need to be changed because that, the needs of the students, there are some students in there with one-to-one paraprofessionals right now. The classroom size, the classroom would need to be changed and we would need more staff than just one paraprofessional if we were to get two more students with the same level of needs. So we are, in a sense, we're not sending our students out of district, which is a.
No, we understand that. That was the reason we opened the classroom, I understand that.
Exactly, and if we could, and when we opened the classroom, and I wasn't here when you opened the classroom, but when you, we didn't know the types of students, we didn't know who was going to be in the classroom, you know, more or less. And you don't know because each year your programs change according to the needs of the kids. So the students that we have, we have to make sure that our programming is meeting the needs of the students that are within the district. So every year, I mean, they basically stay the same, but programs do change a lot based on student needs.
Mr. Pears, I have to one hundred percent agree with Mrs. Martizian. Just talking from experience, uh, being, as Mrs. Martizian is saying, kids with high needs, like that significant needs that requires the extra staff, we are fortunate that it's, the program is working, being that it's brand-new. It hasn't been around for ten years or fifteen years, it's still a work in progress. You know, if we kinda add more to the mix, we could put those kids at risk that they, they're not making the gains and, you know, by law, the parents could fight and say, you know what? Program's failing, I want my kid back out of district. So I think what she said about, you know, ten to eleven, the kids that may be, you know, are not as significant, that might be something to look at. However, I think, you know, it's not broken, don't fix it yet. And again, I think it's brand-new and there's still some work in progress. I have worked with Mrs. Martizian with the group, um, strategic planning for K-eight and, um, you know, hopefully that would go with the high school, but it has the high school in mind. So still in the beginning phases with our, with the program. I don't think this is, to look at the money issue right now.
Well, our responsibility is to look at the money. I'm, I'm, I'm raising the issue. I just wanna be sure that we've looked at it and I'm not looking to affect the level of service for any of our, uh, kids and, but we need to be conscious of where there's, where there's possible revenue sources, um, so.
So those were the two, um, more details.
Oh, I, I, one other thing. We don't, where is the special education transportation in, in this? We have a list of the special education tuitions. Do we have, uh, itemized, uh, transportation costs?
No, I did not include that for tonight.
Uh, what's the total? Is the, is the special ed transportation, um, a separate number?
We have an increase of special ed transportation and rehabilitation student transportation of fifty-three thousand for next year.
And where is that? Is that?
It's part of the special education line.
Oh, it's part of the line, okay.
So it's fifty-three? And, um, Mrs. Martizian, can you give us a quick, just a quick summary? I'm not looking for, you know, any, any kind of identification of, but we have an increased number of students. Why is the transp- special ed transportation of fifty-three thousand?
We have, um, one additional route for next year. We also have an existing route that will be one hundred percent the high school's responsibility. We cost-share it with K-eight right now. Uh, we have to pick up the whole cost next year because all three students would be considered Somerset Berkeley Regional School District students.
So two additional routes.
One point three. One point three.
I think it's mostly an increase because of the kids aging out from K-eight going, so that's what, you know, it's a clear bottom line. Like K-eight went down.
Yes.
And that's why I kinda brought it up a couple of years ago, so it's very important to look and, you know, let the people know that this is how it actually, if one goes down, this is going up. And it's just that part is how it is. And you can't predict, you know, where the kids are gonna be, you know, it's probably still in the process, so, very appreciate. So this could change.
It can always change.
So I think we have, um, we have another couple of meetings with the budget subcommittee that we're gonna go through. There are some other things that we will get. So if there are questions after looking at this that, um, the rest of the committee has, certainly you're always welcome to come to a budget subcommittee. Forward the, the questions directly to, to Lindsay or myself, if you need to direct it to Lindsay. But we're hoping that in a couple of meetings, we're gonna come back with a more in-depth presentation at our, um, budget hearing that we walk through. Prior to that, we'll come up with a final recommendation. This is an appointment we wanted to give to the rest of the committee a chance to get some input and ask some questions before we, before that.
So I just want one simple clarification. So tenitively, looking at fifteen million? Or thirty-seven, uh, five hundred and thirty-seven, right? So I'm just curious, so that's, I sort of confirm, so that's for four grades. And for K-eight, we're at nineteen million and change for eight grades.
So can I jump in on that?
Yeah.
We have, we don't just have four grades. We have students that we have to be financially responsible for until they're age twenty-two that we are taking, but we've never really had this magnitude of taking on that responsibility up until a few years ago. So we technically have eight grades, if you wanna think of it that way. We also have health insurance in our budget, retirement contributions, property insurance, workers' comp, unemployment. All of those things are rolled into this budget as well, that the K-side does not have on, on that budget, from a total perspective.
Right, because we're a reader.
Yes.
Right, so like Swansea has nineteen million for K-twelve.
But they also don't have those things in their budget because it's on the town side.
So I was just.
So if we could, for example, at the next meeting, we could try to determine what the, uh, those costs are that are covered in the town sign and add it to the K-eight budget if you'd like to look at how that range changes. So if we were to look at health insurance for all of the K-eight educators and staff, uh, property insurance, if you were to look at, um, benefits, all of that, and put that on top of the K-eight budget, I think we'd see a sizable, if you're so.
Or all those things on, on separate.
Or hold them on our budget, you know, we could do that as well. I mean, actually, we can do that.
Yeah, and don't forget, we, we, the property insurance for this building is included in our budget. The K-eight school district has four buildings.
Right.
Which the town ensures. Uh, you have larger, uh, staff at the K-eight district, so you have much higher health insurance costs, you have higher, uh, pension costs, uh, all of those, all of those factors, so.
So just employee benefits and insurance are two point, almost two point five million dollars in our budget that you don't have enough.
I just want some clarity of the benefit of regionalizing.
And I would imagine the K-eight number is probably in excess of four million.
It's a more, it's a more inclusive budget, Mrs. Tare, because it, it really does include everything that rolls into this. There's no, when we do the end-of-year report, which ties into what our next school spending number is, I have to ask the town for some of the, of the, off our budget information to include because that is required to include the health insurance and the retirement and all that when it comes to our actual spending for K-eight, whereas I don't have to ask the towns for anything when I do the high school's end-of-year report because it's all in there. Does that make sense?
And if you looked at regional transportation aid, that comes into this district, that would be coming to the district if we weren't regionalized. So it, it is a different budget. It's a much more inclusive budget.
Yeah.
And has, I mean, has any budget conversations been involved with the tri-district committee that was formed, the subcommittee?
Yeah.
So, okay, would that be part, would that be included? When is that next meeting?
That, that committee has not met for a, a longer time. And I'm, I'm just trying to think what, what would be, uh, what would be the tie between our budget process for fiscal nineteen and the regional, the tri-district, uh, review committee? And that would not, wouldn't, that wouldn't happen for at least a year at the very least.
Just to compare on what we're spending or what the benefits would be if there was any benefits of, you know, finances with doing the tri-district.
That's part of the overall analysis, but it's really can't play much of a role in our fiscal nineteen budget.
Thank you.
One, one thing I would mention, I, I don't know if Mr. Larabee was gonna say anything, but I was at the fiscal task force meeting in Berkeley last night.
Taking it away from me?
No, okay. Keep quiet, but I'm sure he will tell you there were some, there was some positive indications in that meeting. Hopefully more to come.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, I was just asking the questions that I'm sure people reading the paper would ask, so that's why.
No, I appreciate it, it's a good question.
Thank you.
And this is, again, not our, what we're voting on as a tentative budget number, but it is where we are right now. There are some things we're still talking about that would make that number fluctuate, so.
Okay, if there are no more questions, then, uh, Mr. Schoenover, superintendent's report, okay?
So, I did want to start out with just a reference to yesterday's events in Florida. Earlier, late this afternoon, earlier this evening, I did send a letter out to families in both school districts, uh, just expressing our, um, our thoughts as a school district for those families and students and teachers affected by the tragedy yesterday, and mentioning, reassuring parents of the safety that we have in our schools, not just for Somerset Berkeley, for Somerset, uh, public schools as well. And just, just to share some of those quick things with you, particularly here at the high school, we do have staff strategically placed around this building each morning at all the open unlocked doors, because the doors are unlocked in the morning. And Mr. Lenzis, if there's anything that you want to interject, just please do so. So, we do have staff present in the morning, because we have to have our doors unlocked, but we do have staff stationed at those locations. As soon as school begins, the, the doors are locked and they remain that way for the rest of the day. We do have a, as, as you all know, it's already been referenced, I think, by Mr. Lebec a little bit earlier, about the video surveillance system and, and the vast number of cameras that we have in and around the building, but we have access to those by the principal, by the assistant principals, by our school resource officer, and by the Somerset Police Department. So, we have eyes on those cameras, or we have the ability to have eyes on those cameras in multiple locations. I mentioned our SRO, Officer Geman, uh, is a full-time, uh, very visible armed school resource officer. He does spend most of his time in this building. He is, we pay for his salary between both districts, but the majority of it is here and this is where he spends the majority of his time. We do conduct annual drills, uh, just the, the basic fire drills that we all experienced as kids, uh, and lockdowns, barricades, evacuations. We, we practice those annually, so that our kids know and our staff know what to do if there ever is an incident, an emergency, where they either have to protect themselves in the classroom or get out of the building safely and quickly as possible. We are, uh, planning on expanding those drills and incorporating different aspects of them. We've talked about this with both the Somerset Police and Fire Departments, where perhaps a lockdown drill also turns into a medical, an emergency response, so that we will, will have a mock injury of some sort, so that our paramedics and first responders also get practice, um, in handling situations like that during the school day when we have, you know, 1,200 people in the building and, and have been evacuated. The Somerset Police Department, they've conducted drills in this building during vacations, where they come in to get the layouts of the, the buildings, where they, uh, they engage in, um, with those airsoft, I'm not sure if I have the right terminology, but pistols, where they will conduct trainings in here, where one of them will be an intruder, an armed intruder, and they will come into the building and have the command center and stage, um, the, these mock emergency incidents. So, they've conducted those in this building and they will continue to do so. So, that allows them, whether if, if a situation like yesterday in Florida or whatever to happen here, um, they know how to respond, as well as those other drills that we conduct during the school year. So, I'll stop there, I have some other things, but are there any questions before, I don't know, from that, that school safety aspect?
Well, I have, uh, I don't know if you want to go ahead. I think we should, we should put, uh, the issue on a future agenda for an executive session, because I'd like to know more about the school resource officer's time. We started out, uh, originally with him being here full-time, uh, so I don't want to talk about that in open session, but I, I'd like to put it on. The other thing, I, I mean, I'm sure that all of us have thought an awful lot about this just over the last 24 hours, uh, and I, you know, I'm not, this is not intended to be critical in any way, uh, I think both the high school administration, the superintendent, and the police department, fire department are doing a great job in, in doing these drills and everything else. Uh, I'm just wondering, to be, to do everything that we absolutely possibly can, if there is any kind of independent, uh, agency consultant, um, that could, um, review what we have in place, or observe drills, or talk with the local police department, I don't know if it's feasible, I don't know what the cost would be, but it's something I would like to at least think about or consider. To be sure that we were, we've absolutely covered every base. I know that the chief of police did a presentation about a program that he attended with the FBI. I don't know if the FBI has any kind of a program where they might, um, provide that kind of a service. I, for one, still have tremendous faith in the FBI, uh, so, but it's, these are just thoughts, uh, about what we might do to make sure we've, we've absolutely done everything we possibly can.
It was a year and a half ago now, but Officer Geman, I guess it's now Captain Carrigan from the Fire Department and I attended a several-day workshop at U.S. Dartmouth, put on by the state, by State Emergency Response Division, and, uh, we brought our policies there. They, uh, we, we conducted some tabletop scenarios using our policies, uh, seeing how effective they would be, how clear they would be, uh, and we did receive some very good feedback then. I can look into doing that further, but we, we have conducted those types of reviews. It wasn't, uh, I think as thorough as what you're suggesting here, but, uh, we take advantage of the situations where they become available to school districts.
I mean, I like us to review having Mr. Geman here full-time. I think, and I want to put this on the agenda for K-8, that I think we should have an armed officer at each school. I think that's necessary, as the proactive measure. So, I mean, I think that's something that definitely should be looked in the budget, and I think we can afford that. And I'm all about being proactive, I know we've talked about things in executive session and things we can't bring up here. I've been very, very passionate about it, right, to make sure we have emergency exits on the fields, because anything can happen on the field. We don't have walls over our fields or the kids are in gym, um, so just taking that into consideration, and my recesses at K-8 level, you know, we should have an armed officer at each school, full-time. That's just my suggestion.
Mrs. Field, you mentioned something, aren't we?
I was just going to say, um, in light of the situation that happened, in addition to the physical security of the building, um, I think it's also an opportunity for us to talk about identifying at-risk students. In this particular instance, it's come to light that many of his classmates and teachers had seen morning signs, um, and just looking at what we have in place for adjustment counselors, psychologists, policies, is there anything that we need to do to not only protect the students that are in here, but also have a pathway to identify those at-risk students? And making sure that if there's any support that the school committee can give in that area, we're aware of what that is.
We do, um, it's part of the budget, we do, we do for another adjustment counselor and things, which would be very helpful if we do, just what you said.
Mrs. Field, I think that.
Well, as I said, I think we can put this on the agenda, uh, under, you know, security issues are a legitimate, uh, topic for executive session, so I think we can look at those issues in an executive session.
Okay. Next, on March 6th, here in the high school, we are having Stephanie Joyle from the Children's Advocacy Center of Bristol County come to speak to parents about cyber safety. Her description of this, uh, she will address cyber safety and what parents can do to keep their children safe online. Digital devices are great for instant communication with friends and family. Our online world can be a fun place to socialize. However, the internet is a place where many unsafe people and situations can be found, and the session, parents and guardians will learn about the following: safe posting do's and don'ts, sexting and the related legal and social risks, and to gain knowledge and understanding of online predators, and grooming in, uh, an effort to reduce dangers to youth online. It's not happening here, but the same day, it, we've had, um, some, some incidents occurring with some of our younger students, I'd say middle school age students, this has been more of a problem than at, at any other level. And, uh, earlier that day, she's obviously going to be presenting at Somerset Middle School, so she'll have, present to the students in the morning and then to parents who can come in the evening. But that is designed for, her presentation for parents is designed for elementary, middle school, high school, uh, parents. So, that was, uh, March 6th at 6:00 P.M. We do have the kids' summer learning center, just the dates right now, June 25th through August 10th. Registration will likely take place in April sometime, but we will be getting some information out to parents soon. Uh, we just, we don't have everything ready, uh, just yet. As Autumn was saying earlier, I think I want to congratulate Catherine Sullivan too, for her third-place finish in yesterday's states. I was actually at a meet this past weekend where, so, so she's been fighting to break several records. We have Somerset Berkeley records and we have Somerset High School records. So, she set the Somerset Berkeley record a few weeks ago, she beat her own personal best on Saturday, but fell short of the Somerset record, the Somerset High School record, and yesterday capturing that third-place finish with a time of 8.78, which was .07 seconds faster than her Saturday time, she set the new Somerset Berkeley record. I sent a parent newsletter out just recently, earlier this week, in that there was a number of, piece of information recognizing some, uh, some different students, uh, from elementary through, uh, high school, but one of the things I had in there was information about just some, some learning opportunities, some links for parents to programs at Brown, uh, Bridgewater State and the STEM program for students, uh, in grades of the six or seven through 12. I also have some information on the Project Contemporary Competitiveness, which is for Somerset Berkeley Regional High School students. We did have, originally, we had a, a presentation scheduled on January 4th at our meeting at Berkeley Middle. Uh, I had four students who were coming, who participated last year, excuse me, coming to present to you and to share their experiences. Uh, we still have to get them rescheduled at one of our meetings, so hopefully, maybe we can do that at our, at our next meeting, uh, so that they can, uh, talk about their experiences at PCC, uh, last summer at Stonehill. Uh, let's see. On Tuesday, March 13th, so we will have a school committee meeting, uh, before then, but at, from 6:30 to 8:00 P.M., the Performing Arts Center here, it's a workshop for, for parents, so grade 11 students, it's a roadmap to college planning. Parents can learn about the college application process, the timetable, college search plan, admission tests, college visits, uh, the application essay, recommendations, financial aid. So, that is on Tuesday, the 13th, 6:30 to 8:00. Anyone who visits Somerset Berkeley, uh, Regional High School website, uh, it is one of the, uh, features that scrolls along at the top of the page.
Mr. Schoenover, could I ask for a recommendation on that?
Sure.
I think it's fantastic to do it. I think 11th grade's a little too late. I think we could, I think it's helpful to have it now, but college visits are starting sooner and sooner as kids are starting to think about what they want to do, and if we could advertise it even to the ninth and 10th graders, I think it would be extremely important, if that's okay. I mean, it's great, but maybe in the future, we could invite the 10th graders, and especially because we're offering the PSATs now in 10th grade, um, and they start to get the college stuff back in, I think it's just a, you can't have the conversation early enough now, so, just a suggestion.
Uh, and lastly, I, I know several of you were at Berkeley Middle School this past Tuesday evening for the Chapter 70 Foundation Budget, that school spending presentation by Rob McDonald from DASI. Uh, I have placed that on the, his presentation's PowerPoint on the Somerset Schools website. Uh, I can easily go in there and put some things, we will get it posted on the SB Regional site as well. It's not there yet, uh, but I have also emailed that link to all of you earlier tonight, uh, just so if you wanted to have it for your own, uh, references, you can access it there. And I think that's all.
Thank you. So, the next item we have on the agenda is food service bid results, on Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you. I'm sorry if my things. There's not a mouse in here.
Steve, Steve.
So, um, we are at a point with our current food service contract with Chartwells, uh, the existing contract, our three-year contract with them is ending at the end of the school year. Uh, I did go out to bid in, uh, mid-January with bids due February 2nd. We did receive one bid, it was from Chartwells. This is essentially, what you're looking at is essentially their, uh, cost proposal that they attached with their, um, their bid specs, uh, as well as the, uh, larger page that has all the initiatives that they're looking to continue, as well as bring some new expansion into the high school's, uh, student dining center. I can go through the financials briefly, if you would like. Uh, I did have our current food service director, Jason Morenci, uh, do a synopsis of our food service program financials. Um, I do apologize, the K-8 side is on the top portion of this grid, high school's kind of split between front and back, I do apologize for that. I essentially asked him what the comparisons were in, in surplus or, or loss over the last four years. So, uh, in fiscal year 15, we had Whitson's, um, we did, the high school recognized a $13,000 loss that year. Moving forward to '16, which was Chartwell's first year of operation here, the high school recognized a profit of $6,061. FY '17, a profit of $19,498. And Chartwells, as of the end of January, is recognizing a profit of $28,093. They are, uh, they're projected to have, um, a profit of a little bit over $30,000 this year, which is great. The only thing that the operating budget has to pick up as it relates to food service is if students' balances are in the negative, based on, um, requirements from the USDA. The operating budget for the school district must fund the school lunch account by doing a transfer to fund whatever the balances are at the end of the year, um, for students in arrears. So, uh, the financial budget projection that Chartwells is proposing for next school year is a profit of $34,371. That is a guarantee, if you look at the price proposal summary, which is the one-pager, kind of the second paragraph down, it does give you guaranteed financial results. They do have a guaranteed financial surplus of $20,000 for next year. If they do not meet that $20,000, they will be forfeiting their management fee of $8,000 that we will not be required to pay for the year. Um, I think that over three years, the food service program at the high school has come leaps and bounds compared to what it was with our prior vendor. I'm very happy with Chartwells. I'm very happy with Chartwell's as a company. I, I do speak to Jason almost daily. He's so positive to work with. He has a lot of energy. He loves what he does. He's happy to talk to parents, he's happy to talk to students. I do meet with his regional director, I'd say once every six weeks or so. The communication is excellent with Chartwell's. Jason's really good about working with special requests, specifically for students. The things that he's done, like with a drop of a hat, is amazing, and I, and I really do value the partnership that I, that I have with him. I really am happy with the results of our food service program since Chartwell's took over. So I would like to recommend that the school committee allow me to move forward with contract negotiations with Chartwell's. The difference with this contract is, based on our prior, versus our prior contract, is our prior contract was a three-year. So it was FY '16, '17, '18. You do have to renew every year with them, regardless of the length of the contract term. That is a USDA requirement. So I don't know if you remember, usually it's in May that I ask, you know, can we renew again for another year? I give the proposal, the financial projections. The difference with this one is we went out to a five-year, so that I won't have to do a bid every three years. What I will have to do though, is every year recommend renewing a contract. We also have the ability to get out of the contracts on an annual basis or within a specific time period, based on the bid specifications, which I believe was four months. So, they can't exit any sooner than four months. We can't walk away without a four-month window, heads up. Barring anything extravagant, I don't anticipate anything like that happening, but I would like to give them the opportunity to, to be with us for up to five years. And I do need to go into contract negotiations with them, because it's a new contract, the Department of Education needs the sign, well, they will not allow us to sign a contract until they have reviewed the contract, signed off on it, and that must be done by the end of April. So, there's a little bit of a tight schedule, but that's the timeline.
If we choose to not renew it, is there any cost associated with breaking a contract for the imminent five years?
No, there's no cost associated with it. I mean, there's specific, you know, agreement language in there, and I can show you when I come with the agreement, I can show you what the bid looked like, and there's specifications in there as far as termination is concerned, so I can, I can highlight that the next-
So you're not looking for us to approve a contract right now, it's more to allow you to enter into negotiations for that contract?
I would not. I know Richard would like to review any agreements that we sign, especially ones for up to five years, so I knew that that wasn't on the table for tonight. But I would just like to go into negotiations with them at this point, because it is kind of time-consuming, so.
The guarantee, is that, would that be locked in, the same amount locked in for five years?
Just for next year.
Could you mention, we're at K-8 levels, so maybe Mr. Page would be more comfortable?
The Somerset Public Schools Committee allowed me to go into negotiations with them over a five-year contract, subject to a one-year annual renewal.
So I entertain a motion to allow the Director of Business and Finance to enter into contract negotiations with Chartwell's for a period of one year, July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, up to the, a maximum of a five-year annual renewal contract. So move. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi, seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion?
I didn't read that. It was Mr. Giliducci and then Mrs. Terra.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mrs. Terra and seconded by Mr. Giliducci. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ananis. Okay. Next is approval of monthly invoices. I ask, usually ask if there are any questions regarding the monthly invoices at this point. I would mention, I did attend the annual meeting of the Massachusetts Association of Regional School Committees, which occurred earlier this week, and I was a representative of the Department of Revenue there, and I had hoped, I had kind of expected that she might be able to answer the question that had been raised previously about whether we're required to approve warrants at an open meeting. She wasn't able to answer the question, but gave me her card and suggested that I write to her, and she will refer the issue to their legal department. So I'm intending to do that within the next few days, and we should have a resolution of that issue. So if no one has any questions about tonight's warrants, please sign them before you leave.
I would thank Mrs. Albanese for sending the warrants ahead of time.
Superintendent's evaluation. We are still awaiting some evaluations, is that correct? So, we won't, we won't name the individuals who have not yet submitted their evaluations. However, I think we need to get this done by our next meeting, so I'm asking that we have the evaluations submitted by a week from Monday, because then the, either the chair or the superintendent's goal subcommittee has to take all of the evaluations and summarize them, so that we have a summative evaluation to present. The superintendent will see each of the individual evaluations, as well as the summative, and they will be discussed in open, open session at our March 8th meeting. If anyone's going to have any difficulty complying with that rather generous deadline, please let us know.
Those are tough words, the others.
We had this item of Bristol County Chamber of Commerce membership. I think, I think we'll remove that from the future agenda, and if there's a reason to put it back on, we will, but there's, there's been a change at the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Melian has left for Greener Pastures, and, sorry, I'm not sure that that's really an issue any longer. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure it is not any longer an issue, based on some conversations I've had with Mr. Machado, so.
Amen.
Next, I would like just to recognize for the Students of the Month for January, Madison Amaral in Business, Madeline Johnson in English Language Arts, Megan King in Art, Eamon Lyons in Engineering and Technology. It's, it's great to see that Eamon is back and doing well. Is he a senior this year?
Yes.
David Marshall Jr. in Music, carrying on the family tradition. Emma Mediris in Wellness. Maya Newhook in Social Studies. Rachel Ochoa in World Languages. That's apropos. Jeremy Russ in Mathematics. And Brianna Studley in Science. So, congratulations to all of those students. Next, we have the Somerset and Berkeley K updates. Mr. Giliducci?
Sure. I do the K to four, and Student of the Month brunches were held on January 12th and February 8th. Always a pleasure to welcome the families and invite them to share and dialogue about what they like about our school. The January brunch featured winter weather songs, while the February brunch entertained a group of first graders singing about friendship. We have two exciting new updates from the cafeteria. On Thursday, January 18th, we welcomed a guest chef from the Whitsons, and what he did is he prepared a special dessert for the children, and it was a healthy one, which surprised everybody, because it was a poached pear and cranberry dessert, and surprisingly, they ate it and they liked it. So that was, that was interesting, because they never ordered anything like that, but they did enjoy and they did eat it. And the thing that's going to be beginning in March is, there's going to be a student breakfast, usually a muffin and juice while they settle into their classrooms, and this will be before school, and the cost will be a dollar eighty. Students who receive a free lunch will receive free breakfast, and if they desire to, and students who pay a reduced price will be charged 30 cents for breakfast. Students will not bring cash or money, because it's going to go on the grab-and-go breakfast program, and that'll be billed through the system, so that you work out good. MCAS tutorials have started in earnest. Attendance to date has looked very strong. The teachers report that students are doing a great job, and our principal appreciates the efforts of the parents to enable students to attend these sessions. February 7th, the Assistant Principal and Principal participated in MCAS training for school administrators with, via a conference call with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This call focused on the security and tested administration requirements. There are several other webinars over the next couple of weeks, as we prepare for MCAS testing in April and May. All third and fourth grader will be participating in the computer-based testing this year. The school council received a good response to their online and paper-based version of the input sheet. The council will review all responses and utilize them to shape next year's school improvement plan, as well as to share with appropriate groups at the school. We have agreed, we have agreed, excuse me, our new group of students, interns from Bristol Plymouth Regional High School. Each year they come in and they work with the kindergarten and preschool classrooms, and they're delighted to have the high school students work alongside our early entry staff and assist with our youngest students. And finally, we are successfully using our email blast systems to communicate with families. Beginning in March, we will use the email system to disseminate the monthly principal's newsletter. So all the families will be getting a copy of the principal's newsletter, and is also on a monthly, it's monthly on the website. It's a great way to share this document and save resources at the same time. Any family that has not yet provided an email address is encouraged to do so, so anyone will get updated on what's happening at the community school.
Thank you. Larrabee?
Well, I can tell you firsthand, it is an exciting time at Berkeley Middle School. Our grade eight students were working on their Somerset Berkeley Regional High School course selection forms over the past few weeks, which has caused a great deal of stress for, for certain students who are both excited and a little bit nervous about high school. But it's great to see the, the level of enthusiasm firsthand, since my daughter's in eighth grade and has a number of friends who can't stop talking about all the wonderful opportunities that are available here at the high school. They're used to taking math, science, and English, but the high school has so much more to offer that they can barely contain themselves. And another thing, tip of the cap to the high school, on February 8th, we had our first unified sports basketball game at the middle school. And again, I can tell you the pride and the excitement that that generated in, in the school. The high school sort of broke the, broke the barrier on that and did it first, but it really was a, a well-received event at the middle school. This has been a busy week. Mr. Schoonover indicated that we had a forum at Berkeley Middle School about net school spending, which was an interesting educational experience for everyone who had a chance to attend it. Spent a lot of, there's a lot of clarity provided by the event, and a lot of good questions asked. I know that our friends at Berkeley will be rebroadcasting the presentation, and if you haven't had a chance to, if you didn't get a chance to attend, it really is something that I think is worth watching, especially if you want to see me, because I'm on the team. Last night, we had a meeting of the Berkeley Fiscal Task Force, which has met several times so far this year. The purpose of the Fiscal Task Force is to try to determine what is available and what the town could do in order to try to offset some of the issue created by the failure of last year's override. So at this point in time, there are three overrides on the table. They're being reviewed by the committee. Committee has made a few decisions. First decision is if an override was to be pursued, and it does appear that it is likely to be pursued. Both the, both our finance advisory committee and our finance committee have indicated that they do support us moving forward with some sort of an override this year. If an override was to be pursued by the town of Berkeley, it would likely, or the, the committee made the, the decision that it would be on the May ballot, as opposed to the July ballot, which makes a significant difference for the district as far as budget and purposes is concerned. Those of us who lived through that process last year realized how difficult it was, when we really didn't know the fate of the override until the middle of the summer. So that would also mean that the town meeting piece, because every override is a two-part process, the town meeting piece would, would be pursued in June at our regular town meeting. So we'll have a little bit more clarity a little bit earlier this time. The three overrides that are on the table at the moment are $900,000, $845,000, and $750,000, and the Fiscal Task Force is weighing out the pros and cons of each of them. I'm anticipating that further discussion will take place on February 28th, and because of timing issues, it's very likely that a decision would have to be reached by the committee to make the necessary recommendations and go through all the necessary hoops essentially sometime in early March. And lastly, Berkeley fundraising, which was such an important part of the solution to the issues at our K-8 school district, raised a total of $171,481.11, and made the last of the presentations of the funds at our school committee meeting on Monday. Berkeley fundraising was very glad to, to be part of the solution to the problem that we faced in the town of Berkeley. However, there's a lot of work, and at this point, I know that that group has disbanded. So it doesn't appear that there is another safety net if the town of Berkeley chooses not to support an override in FY '19. So kudos to everyone who was part of that, and I, I, I'm for one, tremendously grateful for all the efforts of my community. But as we all know, it's irresponsible to assume that private funds can pay for public functions, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
What does that have to do with the force next year?
Yeah.
Use your powers. You can do it. Okay, for K-8, there we go. Let's see, congratulations on the middle school math team, they placed first place in the last competition on January 26th, I believe. We have the Next Parent Academy, which is March 6th coming up, I think we'll talk about it in your update. There was registration for next year's kid regotten coming up, that's going to be online. You still have to drop off your applications though to the elementary school, but they will be able to download it online. We also have the, the summer school, Mr. Aguirre planning?
Yeah, I mentioned that earlier.
We also did the preliminary budget presentation, and we moved it at the $19 million and change. We did the five-years bid for the food service at Chartwell, the same as here, which was presented. We are still taking interest for the MSBA Middle School Building Committee, which was placed in the paper this past week. We'll be talking about that, and we deferred the superintendent evaluation for the same reasons as, not naming any names.
Okay, thank you very much for that. The next item we have on the agenda is approval of minutes of prior meetings. I entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of January 18th, 2018.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Terra. Is there any discussion? Absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstained.
So we have four votes in the affirmative, Mrs. Field and Ms. Larrabee abstain. I will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of January 18th, 2018.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Terra. Any discussion? Absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stained.
Four votes in the affirmative, Mrs. Field and Ms. Larrabee abstain. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting.
Mr. Pierce, I do have one. That's okay.
Okay.
We have, and maybe I will defer to Mrs. Albinaz, but we have recently, actually, as of today, the Somerset Friends of Music, they have donated the trailer that they received this past summer from the David M. Morens Music Foundation to Somerset Berkeley, so that, I'll just give it over to Lindsay, because she's been working closely with the Friends of Music and with Brian Murphy on this, but I believe we do need to accept that, because there is a, I think they're going to be using that sometime, they're assuming for another music event.
So, the reason for the donation to the Somerset Berkeley High School is because there is insurance risk with one of our employees owning a trailer that we do not own or is titled to us, so that's the short version of it. We should accept donation of it tonight. There is a music event that they will be using that trailer for next weekend, and we don't have another school meeting scheduled till then. I have been in touch with Brian Murphy about getting it registered with the DMV in our name relatively shortly, so we should have everything taken care of.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly that it's very important from a potential liability standpoint, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the donation of the trailer by the Friends of Music to the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any further discussion? Absent of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Inanous. Thank you. So.
I do have something for other for next meeting, if possible.
Other?
So, I'd like to see before the summer kind of rolls around about summer school, and I want to make sure, or ensure, that it's reviewed by the committee, that there is enough notification to parents of kids that are going to summer school. Last year was like two days, and parents had no idea that their kids needed summer school, and it started really quick. It's also kind of my concern with the summer program Mr. Aggar is doing, that's starting on June 25th. It's like right away, right soon as school gets out, not long enough, some days. So, I guess my concern is summer school, is there going to be enough notification? So, I don't know if it's already planned, but it's such a quick thing right after school with a big gap in August, when you're doing it so quick. The other thing that's come to the attention is, the question is, students that are on IEPs that are requiring summer school shouldn't really pay for the summer school course, because if they need summer school, it's because of the failure of an IEP, and other districts do not charge that if it's above credit, to gain credit back. It's different if you're not on an IEP, so I like to make sure those things are addressed, because parents should know by the IEP regulations. So, if your child is failing by the IEP kind of rules, you should notify the parents that the kids aren't doing well, so you hold a meeting, so you can fix the problem before they need summer school, not to know after they get the report, why they failed that semester. So, that's just step two. Put on the agenda, it doesn't have to be the next one, it can be the April one, that's fine, but I would like those reviewed.
All right, so we'll put those under action items for future meetings.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public input? Doesn't appear that there are any members of the public here, so. So, we have on the agenda a executive session. We'll have a very brief executive session, and the committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. So, I'll entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Somerset Teachers Association Unit C and B. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair, so do players.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mr. Larrabee. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mr. Larrabee?
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliardi?
Aye.
Mrs. Tara?